I hope now that you can be as aggressive as possible to try to continue to protect our interests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Anybody else going to close the meeting?
My name is Ann Winchester. I live at 71817 Sahara Road. We've been listening to the testimony this afternoon, as you have, as I have. There are many pros and cons to the direction this has taken to solve this difficult problem, and we have heard many of them voiced. I know that you all have been receiving some letters also. I've been copied on some of them. I do not believe we have a final solution to the issues surrounding short-term rentals. I believe we will be here again in the future, continuing this discussion, and that has now brought us to the adoption of this ordinance with the changes. I will not take up your time rehashing these issues that are before all of us. Rather, I would like to ask each one of you one question. Would you buy a house next door to a short-term rental? Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else?
Hi, folks. I am Robert Zaffron, and I live in the house with all the red doors and gates onto this road. You know my position on STRs. I expressed it firmly at your last meeting here, as I do now. STRs must be banned in residential neighborhoods in accordance with city ordinances. It is your sworn duty to enforce. Within 18 months, STRs must be either lived in by their owners, rented on a long-term basis, or sold. We homeowners bought our residences here because they were zoned as residential, not business, not mixed. We elected you. It was not the usually absentee owners of STRs who do not vote here, just as renters do not support or contribute to our community and its stores and life other than to generate TOT. It's not the responsibility of residential neighborhoods to raise revenue for the city, except through our taxes, not through subsidizing TOT paid for by carpetbaggers. The attorney working with us affirms the city council has the power under zoning laws to regulate or prohibit short-term rentals. The council has the authority to consider short-term rentals a non-grandfathered use. Zoning was created and is justified by the degree of certainty to its various designated districts. When that certainty no longer exists, the protection of zoning no longer exists. Houses are expected to be used as residences, not profit-making businesses, for people not residing in them. A house owned by an investor and uses an STR converts the principal use of a residence into a business. My overly accommodating and appeasing colleagues maintain the harmful status quo about STRs in their misdirected desperation to limit them when STRs must be banned in keeping with the city's zoning laws. Don't put a Band-Aid on the serious wound in our city and neighborhoods that is the presence and the proliferation of STRs. Cure the problem by banning STRs. Who among you wants to put a Band-Aid on our problem and then turn away from it? Who will accept a Band-Aid? Would you like -- you want to put a Band-Aid? Of course, that's appropriate. May I offer -- I have Band-Aids for anyone who wishes to put a Band-Aid on this problem. The issue is zoning of residences and businesses. Appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, Robert. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
Good afternoon. I am Marilyn Arcoli Arcaroli, and I live at 17 Juniper Lane, Ranch and Mirage. I think you're all familiar with the complex. I'm going to speak for the resident who isn't a homeowner. I rent. However, I also have my meals in Ranch and Mirage. I go to Five Guys. I buy my coffee at the Chevron station for $3 less than Starbucks. I buy my car where I can get the best deal. Sometimes it's a retired person from Ranch and Mirage. Sometimes it's out of the city of Ranch and Mirage. I want to tell you how the short-term rentals affect me, and you probably wonder how. You're living in this gated community. You're safe from all this. Well, I pet sit when I can to supplement my income. And I pet sit at this one particular place that has a rental on each side. Now, this is a fact. I go to the home. I go to pull into the driveway. The residents are gone, and I can barely get my car into the driveway because there are cars parked at the curb but into the drive. In the morning, between 7:00 and 8:00, sometimes even earlier, I awake to the sound of pound, pound, pound. That's music. I can't hear the words. I can only hear the extreme pounding of the bass. I have dogs that I'm taking care of there. They jump up. They're even startled. I have called the code line, and they said they'll be out to check, and nothing has happened. This music goes on day and night, but you know, it's not just the music. It's, of course, the cars and the people and the shouting. But what's even as offensive as the music is the language. I don't know what kind of people are renting these places, but I wake up to the most foul language, and here at day and night, there aren't, they say, renting to four people, a family of four, who couldn't be able to come to Ranch and Mirage unless we had these rentals. No, they're renting to a family of four who also brings their families and their friends, and it ends up, just as the gentleman says, 30 and 35 people. So it is out of control, and I know, folks, that you wouldn't want to live in a situation like that. And although I'm not a homeowner at this point, it's affecting me also. I thank you for this time.
Thank you for coming to the meeting today. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, last call.
Good afternoon. My name is Louisa Davis. I live on Sun Valley Road in the Tamaras neighborhood in Ranch and Mirage. I own three vacation rentals. Can you hear? Sorry. First of all, I want to say all of the things I've heard about negative parties loud, I'm very sorry for that. And if those citizens are saying that the city, the code enforcement is not working, that's a different issue, because there are ordinances on the books for everything I heard today. So to me, to Isaiah, and to Jeremy, you know, if that's really true, what they're saying, then to me, we need to look at that so we can control that. I was disappointed that these ordinances had no prior discussion before being added in. I would like to have been a part, and I was lucky enough to meet with Isaiah, the mayor, and Jeremy this past week to voice my concerns, but I would like to be a part of a panel and talk with some of the homeowners and us problem-solve and come up with suggestions to make it better. I don't want what their experience is. I have not experienced that with my guests, but I feel I'm a responsible STR owner. I want to see the city use data. Let's gather. Is a 10% ban acceptable? I mean, a 10% cap in the neighborhood? I don't know. Is a complete ban acceptable? I don't know. Is a 50% cap acceptable? Until we really look at the data to identify and analyze what's really appropriate, and then we try it, I don't see, or no one has shown me, the data that you've used to come up with these suggestions. And there may be suggestions from Ann or from other people that are even better. But as a group, I think, you know, we can together problem-solve and come up with a situation where we can try it and really, hopefully, have a positive impact. I think STRs in the world are here. It's an option for people to come, families to come. I don't rent to the type of people that they are talking about, and I'm sorry that they've had that experience. I believe that each of you in the city council and the staff is really making decisions that you believe are the best for the community. I believe that Palm Springs City Council is doing the same, and I think they were very surprised when the voting public voted 70 to 30 to keep vacation rentals. I don't think they thought it was going to be that way. And again, it's not perfect there. It's not perfect here, but I don't want to ban for sure, but I don't want to hear what these permanent residents are saying, you know? And if we need to raise the fees even more and put more code enforcement in place so when there is that banging music, within, you know, 30 minutes, code enforcement is there, helping the permanent residents. I think together we can problem-solve if the city is open to facilitate that amongst its citizens and amongst people that, like myself, we want to make it better. And I want to be part of the solution, as I know the people that have vacation rentals that are here today, they want to be part of the solution too. And I was very happy to hear Ted talk about how important tourism is here and have actual numbers. I would like you to include the STR TOTs as well, because I think that's a piece of data we can use to look at the whole situation here. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing, or meeting, and go to the council. Before we do that, I'd like to thank all of you for being here today and for two weeks ago when we started this process. And you've all put in a lot of time and effort. Staff has put in a lot of time. We've looked at as many alternatives as we can. We met with many of you once, twice, three times to try and look at the ways things can be changed or improved in the future. And as Jeremy said, I think we're looking at a process that is going to change. It's going to change today, tomorrow, and into the future. So we have to determine what is the best right now for all our residents and then implement some sort of a program. At least, I think we should have something like a pilot program that could initially start with where we are today and then work forward by meeting with all of you and meeting with the staff to get a program that everybody can buy into. This is the best program right now that we've had in a long time, but it's not perfect. We can work to improve it all so that you all realize the benefits of that. We can work to improve it all so that you all realize the benefits of that. So I think a lot of the issues that you discussed today are certainly a concern to the city. We think of Ranch and Mirage as being the best city in the valley. So when I hear things about gangs or other issues where people say it's deteriorated over the last 10 years, I'm sorry if it has, but I certainly haven't seen it. And I don't think any of my fellow council members have seen a deterioration of the city. Everything we do is to improve the quality of life in our city. So we're going to make it right. We're going to work on it. We're going to improve it. We're going to fix code enforcement so you get the kind of response that you feel you should have, and we'll go forward. So at this time, I'd like to call on my other council members for a comment. Dana?
The gentleman with that heavy head of hair who remembered something I did sometime ago. Is he here? Wait, was that you hiding there? Oh, over there. I very much remember that. That goes back about 18 years or 16 years, something like that. I remember it happened early in my term. And my attitude has not changed an iota about the need for peace and quiet in our communities, our residential communities. Problem has been that something snuck up on us, snuck for a while, and then became a thundering bolt, such as the vote in Palm Springs. Couldn't understand. I couldn't believe that the city of Palm Springs would vote a substantial majority in favor of short-term rentals. Ann Winchester asked, "How would you like to live, how'd you like to buy a home next to a short-term rental?" Well, like you, Ann, I live on a ungated street in the Tamarisk area, Palmdale Drive. And I suspect we have a couple, one or two, short-term rentals on my street. But I've never heard them, if they're there. Maybe there aren't any, because I haven't heard anything that I thought was out of order. Not only would I not buy a home next to a short-term rental, I do my best when a home, homes on both sides of me and my wife, sold in the last six months. And I went to considerable efforts to find out whether or not they were in the short-term rental business. If they were, I don't know what I would have done, consistent with a lawyer staying within the parameters of the law. But I would have been extremely upset. The problem is, they came upon us, and there's nothing we can do about it in a clean sweep. You can't sweep away the problem. What we have is a series of homes that interrupt the tranquility of our lives throughout our city, and no place more than the Cove. And I can tell you that I've thought about this a long, long time, trying to think of what am I missing? What's the answer to it? Sometime ago, I came to the conclusion that we should work at coexistence, because I didn't know how you got rid of the houses or the people that own the houses. The fact that people make money out of those houses doesn't impress me at all. Doesn't mean anything to me. Residential is residential. Commercial is commercial. You want to make money? Buy a house in the commercial section, or if they allow it, or get in their commercial business. I don't have any sympathy for the people who come in and then turn a residential area into a commercial area. My problem is, as a lawyer, as a resident, and a person who's spent a lifetime trying to solve issues, I don't know of a single answer that clarifies and ends the issue. I advised Rob Moon to get out front on that issue in Palm Springs. I said, "The residents are going to be with you. Residents don't want short-term rentals." Turned out, I don't think he took my advice, but if he did, he hasn't blamed me for whatever insults he's accepted since that vote turned out like it did. But just because the community voted that way gives it no license, in my view, for it to be an area where you can have short-term rentals. Because what it's doing is it's distorting the zoning that existed before you got there. And those of us who have been around don't want to see the quietude of our residents, our residential communities, modified because somebody comes in with an idea that they can make a buck. Because Ranch and Mirage is a good city for tourism. We've been a good city for tourism long before these rentals, short-term rentals, became an issue. The short-term rentals didn't do anything to benefit Ranch and Mirage. Nothing. Handful of dollars it is spent trying to keep the problems down. We're not putting money in the bank from the income we get licensing short-term rentals. We don't get much to begin with, but all of it is used to try to control the problem that has been hoisted upon us. This legislation, I'm going to support it because it's the best thing I can do now. But there's one thing that I do want to do, and I'm going to suggest that our city manager, seriously, and he's been very serious about all these issues, but seriously, I want to see a study around the West or around the country. I want to see a study of how people have dealt with this issue. What do we do? Because if we outlaw it, that doesn't mean anything. They still pop up, and we don't get the money that it takes to keep them quiet. If we outlaw them, they're still there. They're just floating under our view. This is the most intractable, difficult issue I've seen on the council since I've been here. And I wish I knew what the answer was, because I guarantee you I'd vote for it in a New York minute. Because I don't think that, as much as there are very nice ladies who have come up here spoken for maintaining the short-term rentals, there's a lot of nice people that don't want short-term rentals because they're affected by it. And I wonder, I didn't hear, I wonder how many of the ladies who spoke and others who have spoken to us by email or telephone have the short-term rental that they own next door to their own house? Wonder how many are in that category? I see one hand go up. Okay, one house, one... That has a good side to it, obviously. The owner can keep a closer eye if the owner is home. But for the most part, the owners of the house do not live next to the rentals that they're offering to the public. It's just a horrible, horrible nightmare. But what I'm hoping we can do, Mr. City Manager, is we can conduct a serious study to find out, is there a... Whether, I may be alone in the council. I don't think so. I think the council's probably inclined the same way I am. But if there is a way to effectively eliminate them, let's spend some time with experts or whatever and see what it is. Try to find some solution that nobody else seems to have latched on to. Because if there is a way, most of us, I certainly don't, I don't want to have my next-door neighbors as short-term renters. I want them to have the same investment in the community that I have. A quiet home. Keep your dogs from barking too much. And be a good neighbor. There is one thing that I'd like to, because I know that the language of this ordinance is what we're going to have to live with for a while. I would like to just make a clarification on Section 3.25.075 under Parking. Add the words "between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m." after the word "garage" in Paragraph A.
Can you read the whole sentence, Dana?
Yeah. "While a short-term rental is rented, all vehicles which are under the control of the owner, responsible party, occupants, and/or guests must be parked on the premises where the short-term rental is situated on a paved surface or an enclosed garage between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m."
And what was the change?
Adding the words "between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m." There was no limit previously. Does that meet the issues that we were talking about on that?
Yes, it does. And so we can definitely commission the study. In the development of what you're considering today, staff did research numerous other cities that are prime tourism areas that struggle with short-term rentals. And so we were looking to see what other communities were doing in the protection of their full-time residents. So some of the provisions that we are presenting were directly from other communities that have already implemented provisions like that. And, you know, our approach and the policy with this is knowing that a ban doesn't make them go away, put stringent rules on and make them follow those rules, and then if they don't, find them. So, you know, we've heard a couple comments today about calling code and nothing happens. I would encourage residents to continue to use our short-term rental hotline. It's a 24/7 hotline. You'll get a person every time. That prompts a response from the Sheriff's Department and our code officers. And there's a real-world example that I'd like to give to the council and for Mr. and Mrs. Stokes, who is here in the audience today. It's directly relevant to them because this short-term rental is their neighbor. So Jeremy and I had a meeting with them over the summer, and they were expressing concerns about the short-term rental next to them. And so on June 22, Mr. Stokes called the hotline at 2:01 p.m., so 2:00 in the afternoon, and there was music being played out on the patio. Code responded, and sure enough, there was music playing on the patio at 2:00 in the afternoon. That resulted in a citation to the property owner. That is against our short-term rental rules. Now, if that was a full-time resident or a long-term renter, there would be no problem with them having music on their patio. That's not against the rules. So we put in extra rules for short-term rentals that help give them extra protections that they wouldn't have if that was a full-time resident there. Again, same issue, and let me get the date back up. So same property. On July 14, Mr. Stokes called the hotline again at 8:00 with the same issue. By the time that code got to the property, the music had been turned off, but the tenants did confirm that they were playing music outside. That resulted in another citation to that property owner, and now that property no longer has a short-term rental permit. So they're no longer a short-term rental. That is how the city and code enforcement uses these rules to protect our full-time residents. And that's the approach for everything in here. The density provision was a direct result of the issues that popped up in the city of Palm Springs. And through that public process, it was a resident-driven initiative to ban short-term rentals. Obviously, everybody knows the results of that vote. It failed by 70%. But you had 30% of the people so frustrated with the issue that they went around and gathered signatures. We never want that to happen here. And so that's why we have very stringent rules. We've been sued in the past over our rules, and we've won. So we have some of the tightest rules out here in the Coachella Valley for the protection of our full-time residents. The one issue that the Desert Sun called out for Palm Springs was they had to fix the density issue, meaning you can't let a certain neighborhood just get completely inundated with short-term rentals. So even though the Desert Sun and their editorial board was against the short-term rental ban, they called that out as an issue for the city of Palm Springs, identifying that as one of the things that led to so much anger and frustration was the inundation of neighborhoods with short-term rentals. So that was what prompted us to think of the density provision of not allowing permits to be issued over 10%. So that will help protect our public neighborhoods from getting inundated with these short-term rentals. We also put in an anti-clustering provision so that one property doesn't get surrounded on all sides by STR properties. So that's ultimately what led to this density provision. For some of our areas, there's still room for growth because they have a lower number of permits issued. But in some of our districts, it's essentially a moratorium, where there's no more growth on short-term rentals. So from the city's standpoint, we try to be very active on code enforcement, and we have a zero-tolerance policy with STRs. If they even violate one rule, and there are many rules that we can cite on, and every violation is an additional penalty financially. So we could go for a noise issue, and if we notice that they're exceeding the parking limitation or the occupancy limits, they're going to get three sites. They're going to get the first site for the noise. They're going to get the second site for too many cars. And then they're going to get the third site for exceeding the occupancy. So our rules and our approach to this are all for the protection of our full-time residents. But I think the study is a great idea, and it's something that staff will move forward with. But our rules are designed to protect our full-time residents. And if you're a full-time resident, please utilize the hotline. It helps us. There is a response to the hotline, and we have a zero-tolerance policy with our short-term rentals.
Thank you, Isaiah. That certainly clarified some of the issues that have been raised by our residents. Charlie, did you have anything to say?
You know, after listening to what is being said here, you know, we could go on and on. I could be redundant and repeat. But I think what you're really seeing here is a council who is very sensitive to both sides of the issue. But as Isaiah just formed his last words, you can see where our focus really lies. And it is in our residents. And if anybody goes back to the last council meeting and heard my remarks on having been in a situation like this, where at 2:00 in the morning, I had to leave my bedroom and go and sleep in my guest house because on the other end of the property. There's nothing more frustrating than that. As far as people in business, it is a business. And they have found a neighborhood where they think, and they have done good because they have come in and refurbished some of these homes that have been neglected. Does that give them the right to turn it into a hotel area or a resort area and ruin your lifestyle? No. Everything that Dana said, can't agree with more than what was said by him or what was just said by Isaiah. And as far as, are we doing this for money? Dana answered that question, no. The little bit that comes in goes out for what he said to protect you as residents of the city of Ranch and Mirage. So I just want you to know that... So I just want you to know that this council, this staff, is there for you. We listen to you. I understand the other side as the investment thing. I'm an investor also, as was said a couple of weeks ago. But I do have to lean with Rancho Mirage what it is, why we're here. It's not a business. These are homes. These are what you have worked for, your lives to retire in peace and in quiet. So the other thing I just want to say is reference to, I bought these two houses and I make no money from them. I kind of hard to believe that anybody would vest millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars to just be able to pay gardeners and taxes, but get nothing out of this. So when people say something like that, then it shows me their sincerity. Where is it? Where is the honesty that they're really trying to convey? And I'm not picking on anybody. I'm just saying what was said. Would I buy a house next to your rental? Absolutely not. I wouldn't do it. And as it was said here, we're in this together. But the city of Rancho Mirage, and I will repeat again and end it, there's nothing more that I could elaborate on that Dana or Isaiah hasn't said, other than this city council, this city hall is there for the residents of Rancho Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Standing ovation, Charlie.
Thank you, everybody.
Ted, do you have a comment?
The way I view this ordinance that's before us today is not the end product. It's just the beginning. It is something that is being proposed at this time for the best interest of our residents. And I view it again, it was said before, that we'll be together again. Yes, we will. There will be amendments to this particular ordinance as we tighten it up, as we look at it, as we improve it. So from my perspective, this is just the first step. This is not the last step. And to echo Charlie's words, the criteria that we look for is the well being, the peace and quiet, and the enjoyment of our residents. And that's what we're going to be continuing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Iris, last but not least.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made my comments last week, or at the last meeting. And I think I made it very clear, my position on caring for our residents. And I think that as everyone has reiterated, this is a work in progress. And things will change from year to year. When we find that one thing doesn't work, we'll try something else. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll be back here next year looking at the results of the program and making some hard decisions. So as everybody has said, this is the beginning of a long, long walk up to determine what's the best way to go. Anybody else would like to say anything before we go for a vote here? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
All right, I will make the motion. Now, do I make the motion with Dana's change? Do I do it that way? All right, I move to accept ordinance number 1139, second reading amendment, chapter 3.25, short term rentals of title III revenue and finances of the Rancho Mirage municipal code to regulate the short term rentals. And number, resolution number 2018, next in order, declaring a... Wait a minute, that's not it. That's it. That is my end with Dana's correction.
Okay, there's a motion, and Iris seconded the motion. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you all for being here today. We will all be seeing you in the future. We've already got some plans to work with some other outside agencies to try and get some of this information that you all asked about. So we'll be meeting with you. Hopefully, a year from now, we can sit down and say, we made a lot of progress because of everybody's involvement. So thanks again for being here tonight. And we'll all move on to item number seven, which Marcus Alimon, our project manager on this item. This is resolution number 2018, next in order, declaring a shelter crisis on behalf of the Coachella Valley region. Marcus, nice to see you today.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Kite, city council, and city staff. The effort to combat homelessness in the Coachella Valley continues to positively impact the homeless community by providing services and programs that afford them the opportunity to gain permanent housing. In June, the state of California launched the Homelessness Emergency Aid Program, or HEAP. HEAP is designed to provide direct financial assistance to cities and counties to address the homelessness crisis in California. The Riverside Continuum of Care expects to receive a HEAP allocation of $9.7 million based on a formula that takes into consideration the annual homeless point in time count collected through the county Department of Public Social Services. Rancho Mirage's 2017 point in time count was zero. However, the Coachella Valley registered a count of 526. The Coachella Valley Association of Government plans to apply for a share of the HEAP funding for eligible projects through the SEVAG administered Coachella Valley Housing First program. However, SEVAG cannot declare a shelter crisis on behalf of the region. Therefore, it is recommending all value cities declare a shelter crisis in order to directly obtain the funding for the valley program. The declaration of a shelter crisis by the city will have no fiscal impact, does not obligate the city to open a shelter, and brings SEVAG one city closer to full participation for their block grant application. It is recommended the city council approve the resolution declaring a shelter crisis. Thank you for your time. I am open to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Any questions from the council? Anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question on this item? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. I move that the city council adopt resolution number 2018, next in order, declaring a shelter crisis on behalf of the Coachella Valley region pursuant to SB 850, Chapter 48, statutes of 2018, and government code section 8698.2.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, Marcus, good job.
We have a question for you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, back, back.
Why'd you leave so early?
Oh, good answer.
No, Marcus, you had to say, I got to get right back to work. There you go.
Okay, we will now continue on with the last item of the day, which is fiscal year 2017-18 summary and year end budget adjustments. And Joseph Carpenter, our finance manager, will discuss this item. Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Today's presentation is going to focus primarily on a review of the general fund operating and non operating or capital budget versus actual results for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. The staff report and action you take this afternoon will serve as the mechanism to comply with our budgeting policy for financial reporting purposes. So let's get started. The general fund operating summary provides a high level summary of the operating revenues and expenditures of the general fund. Operating revenues and expenditures can be thought of in the same context as your personal checking account, your normal day to day, week to week, or month to month income and expenses. Currently displayed on your screen are the fiscal year 1718 amended budget, year end actuals, and the calculated difference between the two. If you focus your attention on the actual column, you will find for the fiscal year, the general fund had operating revenues of approximately $28.3 million and expenditures of just over $23 million, for an operating surplus of $5.2 million. This surplus was the result of both an increase in revenue and decrease in expenditures, which I'll detail in the next few slides. The table on your screen highlights the $871,000 increase in actual recognized revenue versus budgeted revenue for the fiscal year. As you can see, the city received $224,000 more in interest on investments than we budgeted for. This increase can be attributed to the timing of when cash was expended by the city and rising interest rates. Additional revenue sources that significantly exceeded their budgeted projections were property transfer tax for $162,000, property tax for $144,000, sales tax for $127,000, and transient occupancy or bed tax by $105,000. The remaining 30-plus revenue sources, such as building, planning, and public work fees, exceeded their budgeted projections by $109,000. Now let's take a look at operating expenditures. General fund operating expenditures are broken down into three object levels. Personnel, which includes salaries and benefits, operations and maintenance, and department equipment. The table on your screen displays the approximately $2.1 million reduction in actual versus budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year. At an object level, personnel was $411,000 under budget. O and M was $1.7 million under budget. And department equipment was $24,000 over budget. Please note that all object level expenditures that were over budget for the fiscal year are included in the budget adjustments found in attachment two of your staff report. Let's take a closer look at the $1.7 million decrease in budgeted versus actual expenditures at the O and M object level. Approximately $690,000 of the decrease is budgeted expenditures can be attributed to the reduced fire fund subsidy. $404,000 of the decrease is due to our budgeting procedure for contracted sheriff's services. What this means is the city budgets for sheriff's services as they are approved by the city council. As an example, in December, when the city approved amending the law enforcement contract with the county of Riverside to add an additional 10 patrol hours per day, the city recognized the full cost in our budget. However, the sheriff's department still needed to reassign personnel to fulfill the additional hours, so a full year's expense was not incurred. Lastly, the tourism and marketing division experienced a decrease in budgeted expenditures of $84,000 due to the increase in TOT revenue, which resulted in a lower subsidy to the tourism and marketing fund. Now that we've covered the operating portion of the general fund, I'll summarize non operating or capital projects. Non operating revenues and expenditures, also known as the capital budget, can be thought of in the same context as your personal savings account. Money you have saved and earmarked for large, one-time purchases or special projects. Currently displayed on your screen are the fiscal year 1718 amended budget, year end actuals, and the calculated difference between the two. If you focus your attention on the actual column, you will find for the fiscal year, the general fund had non operating revenues of $4.2 million and expenditures of $10 million, for non operating deficit of $5.7 million. This non operating deficit is expected and normal as not all capital projects are 100% reimbursed, and thus, the general fund bears a portion of project costs. Non operating revenues consist of various grants and other reimbursements, while non operating expenditures, which are typically long term purchases and large capital investments, such as land, roads, buildings, and equipment, total $10 million for the year. Let's take a closer look at those expenditures. The largest non operating expenditure for the fiscal year was the CalPERS pension liability payment of $5 million. Other significant expenditures for the fiscal year include $2.7 million for observatory and other library improvements, $581,000 for Monterey Avenue street improvements, $490,000 for the continued implementation of citywide software upgrades, and $486,000 in design and environmental review for the Frank Sinatra Bridge. Now that we have covered the general fund operating and non operating revenues and expenditures, we can see how this year's fiscal activity was funded utilizing the city's general fund reserves. As you recall, for the fiscal year, the city had $5.2 million as an operating surplus and $5.7 million in non operating deficit, for a total net use of reserves of approximately $474,000. In the first column along the bottom of your screen, you will see that the city ended last fiscal year with approximately $68.5 million in general fund reserves. And after accounting for the $474,000 in net use of reserves for the fiscal year, the city will end the fiscal year with $68 million in general fund reserves. I would like to briefly walk through the city's reserves accounts. The unassigned fund balance of $16.9 million is money that has not been committed for specific use and is available for any purpose. The money in their city's remaining seven reserve accounts have a specific commitment and can only be used for that purpose unless changed by the city council. The prudent reserve of $25 million is set aside for future revenue shortfalls of 9% or more. The capital improvement reserve of $6 million is for land, equipment, replacement, information technology upgrade, and softwares. The disaster recovery reserve of $11 million was set aside to cover costs and losses associated with a major earthquake or major natural disaster that requires activation of the city's emergency operating center. The economic development reserve of $1.1 million is to be used to continue the economic development efforts of the former redevelopment agency. The Section 19 water reserve commitment was satisfied after the city received notification from the Coachella Valley Water District that funding was no longer needed from the city for the district to move forward with infrastructure improvements to bring water to Section 19 for development. The library reserve of $2.8 million is set aside for future needs of the Rancho Mirage Public Library. And lastly, the public safety reserve of $5 million is set aside for police, fire, medical services equipment, and capital needs that may arise in the future. In addition to the general fund, I'd like to briefly call your attention to three other funds, the housing authority, the Rancho Mirage Public Library, and the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. The housing authority ended fiscal year 1718 with a fund balance of $12.8 million. However, only $7.7 million of this is spendable as of the end of the fiscal year. $5.1 million of the $12.8 million fund balance are in the form of long term receivables that are being collected over the coming years and are not available to spend as of today. The Rancho Mirage Public Library ended the fiscal year with a $244,000 surplus. Library Director Aaron Espinosa and his staff continue to do an amazing job at our state and nationally recognized library without requiring a subsidy from the general fund. And the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority, or RMEA, ended the fiscal year with a $759,000 surplus after two months in operation. Our program was launched in May, prior to the peak energy usage months of summer, to build up the program reserves, which are used throughout winter months when energy usage is reduced. To close, in fiscal year 1718, the city of Rancho Mirage continued its long history of solid financial management, as evidenced by the $5.2 million operating surplus, and continues to execute its long term plans and use its reserves to better position the city financially and invest in community assets. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joseph. Excellent job on behalf of the committee that works with you, Dana and myself. You've done a great job all year round, and we really appreciate you and your staff. This has been another excellent year for Rancho Mirage. Is there any questions for Joseph?
You were just fantastic. And Joseph, you've done so well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any comments, questions over here? Is there anybody in the audience? Any comments, questions over here? Is there anybody in the audience?
In a year from now?
Anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item or has a question? Okay, looks like you got through all the hard parts, Joseph. Okay, can I have a motion, please, for items A, B, C, and D?
Certainly, I'll make that motion. That the city council of the city of Rancho Mirage and the Board of Directors for the city of the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, city of Rancho Mirage Community Services District adopt the resolutions identified below as Resolutions A through D. I think that would be sufficient. I don't think we need to read them.
That's perfect, Ted.
I'll second that.
There's motion and a second. Would you please vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Well, that's the last item for the day, and I want to thank you all for attending. And we'll go into closed session with our city attorney, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something first? I think this was our second time here in this fabulous new council chamber, and what ITT and Jason has done is amazing, amazing. They did a great job. Very proud of all of this. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding two potential litigation items or potential initiation of litigation items. Council will also consider one significant exposure to litigation item. Under the Brown Act, we're supposed to describe the facts and circumstances that lead me to believe that the city is exposed to litigation. However, there is an exception when the facts and circumstances that might result in litigation against the city are not yet known to the potential plaintiff, which happens to be the case here. The council will also consider the existing case known as Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage, and the council will meet with its labor negotiator, the city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees' Association.
And we will recess into study session, closed session.